I want to call to order the special work session of December 17th, 2012. And before we proceed on, we've got a couple of things that we want to chat about and just brief you on. And we do have one public comment that we're going to make. But all of us are aware of the tragedy that occurred at Sandy Hook Elementary School in Newtown, Connecticut recently. And we're all very distraught and saddened by that occasion. And we realize that there are families who have children in our schools that are afraid and concerned and curious about what our police department does, our county sheriff's department, and how our schools plan. And we had the opportunity this afternoon, Mayor Anderson called a meeting of many of the school board officials, police chiefs from all across the area. Mr. Stuckey was there to discuss many of the things that are already in force to keep our schools safe and also to develop a plan going forward to ensure that our children are kept safe. At present time, there is a heightened awareness by our police force with the presence around the schools. You'll see them drop off and pick up times now, and those officers will be also going through the schools as we explore what options we want to take in the future as far as continuing to make sure that our children are safe. Tonight, at 7:00, there'll be a, at the school board meeting, Williamson County School Board meeting, there will be a special news briefing that will occur sometime around 7:00. And so additional announcements will be made there as we plan and work around a very sensitive issue to all of us. Eric was there, and feel free to make some comments if you'd like or something like that.
Not a whole lot to add, except for, you know, we all are mindful of it. There's been a lot of preparation that happens. But we're also looking at what preventative measures in addition can be put in place to help keep schools safe. You know, there's been dialogue with both Williamson County Schools and Franklin Special School District about where we go and what we can do. And those discussions will continue and lead to, I'm sure, a series of recommendations that we will all look at at some point in the near future. We are, as the mayor said, using our directed patrol and on-duty resources to do additional, to show additional presence at pick-up and drop-off, going through schools, being present, and just helping with that. A couple of years ago, we did add a school resource officer to work specifically at Poplar Grove School and Freedom Middle School. So we're looking at where we put resources and how we can best serve the whole of the community, but especially help keep our schools safe. So that will continue, and we'll keep you informed as we work on that issue. And, you know, there'll be some more discussion tonight about just generally where we're going as a community and taking all the steps that we can to try to address those kind of security issues and concerns in our schools.
Great.
Thank you.
We have one citizen comment tonight, Mr. Drier. If you'll come up, and we're going to give you five minutes, and I'll be... Let's see, why don't you sit right here? And we'll give you five minutes. We've got some pretty important other businesses to take care of tonight, too. So just sit down and give your name and address for the record.
I'm Ted Drier, at 1323 Barclay Lane, Franklin here. And I feel the gravity of what our nation's facing right now as founder of the Children's Kindness Network. We're a 14-year-old nonprofit that our mission is to stop bullying before it begins by teaching kindness values to young pre-K children through Moozie the Cow. And some of you may have read the article in the Williamson County Journal about two, three weeks ago about Moozie the Cow talking to kids about kindness. But that's not my issue. I've got a trivial issue compared to the loss that we saw in Newtown. My issue is that a sewer bill. And my wife and I go to Colorado every summer for three months. And this summer, our meter on our sprinkler system decided they get a hiccup. Instead of our water billing bill being about $25, it's $325. So the neighbor called to say, "I don't know, I appreciate the water, but the water's running down the sidewalk past my house." We're four houses down. And all I'm asking is this, it's real simple. My water bill is $325. The water was $170. The sewer bill is $121. And all I'm asking is that the sewer bill be taken off of my water bill because obviously there was no one there. And it's real simple. And that's it in a nutshell. Now, and just while I've got your attention, the other thing is, I know there's an alternative, you know, for having your sprinkler system on a separate meter. But that separate meter here in Franklin costs $3,931. And this very night, at Spring Hill, the city council is voting on their meter cost. It's currently $1,000, and rumor is they want to reduce it to $750. So that would make it more workable to have a system like that. And I'm not asking you to give me, I'm not asking you to give me, get off the fact that we used that much water. I paid for the water. The neighbor appreciated it. There are a couple of trees that are growing bigger. But the sewer bill, I'd like to have approved if possible. It just seems fair. That's it. That's three and a half minutes. And thank you for anybody that's on.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
There will be some kind of follow-up with, for him or with him or from the office?
Yeah, we can follow up. I've talked to Mr. Drier before. Our policy does not, at this point, allow for an adjustment for a sprinkler malfunction. We do it for leaks. So that's the question, if you want us to do something beyond leaks. Because that's a little different animal when the sprinkler system malfunctions. So that's the direction I need from you to do something different than the policy you've directed.
One question, Mr. Drier. Were you in the house when this was? Were you all out of town?
Yeah, well, we were working on it for three solid months. Every summer, we pay a sewer bill and trash pickup and all that, but we don't use any of those or they finish up on one of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for a discussion regarding update of debt capacity models. And I think they're working on that.
We're getting connected. This is a follow-up specifically related to the Carruthers South project. And the charge was to take those options and look at them and apply them to our financial model and also update our financial model. Because we've been able to bid most all of the items that are in your capital plan and that were in that funding plan, so we can replace some of those projected costs with at least bid numbers and have a better handle on where we are and how things are really coming in versus what we thought they'd be. And it also updates our financial performance from the last fiscal year, the refinancings we've done. All these different elements all come together to give you a picture of where we are, snapshot of where we are today relative to the projects you've already approved and help provide a framework for any decisions you want to make around Carruthers going forward. And again, we've done almost the complete design, and there's just a little bit left to do to be ready to bid the project, whether it's in phases or in whole. And so we're just looking for that direction at whatever time you're comfortable providing it. And I wanted to share that information with you. I think we'll start with going through the financial information and the update of the debt capacity model that has taken place. We've got Lauren on the line. Is Lauren available to us? Hi, Lauren.
Hi, how are you?
Doing great. I hope everybody can hear you all right.
Well, I will say, I'm on speakerphone as well, so initially, does it sound okay?
Can you guys hear okay?
Can we put her up full screen?
I think she's...
Yes, her presentation. We'll appreciate that she's up in the corner there. That way you can see her slides, actually.
All right, I think we can hear you. We'll listen as closely as we can. Russ, do you have any opening comments or we want to jump in?
I was just going to say, I asked the question about could we make her a little bigger on the screen, but then we'll lose the slides, and she's going to go through all of the slides and do the description. So Lauren, the floor is yours.
Okay, good. Well, I'll ask Eric and Russ, as you are there, why, but it looks like there's a little bit of a different setup since the last time I'm there, that certainly stopped the... Has... Are we still good?
Yes, you're fine.
It certainly stopped.
We're getting the microphone a little closer to you.
I've got a new job, microphone adjuster, boom operator, or grip.
Well, I will say, I can't see all of you. I can see a few of you, but certainly someone, we may need to raise their hands. I can see all the, and red, so she maybe has to be the one to flag me down.
I don't want to answer questions, too. So that's great, isn't it?
But I do appreciate you all working with me. I'm actually at a PSM meeting for a wrap-up of the year end. But nonetheless, I'm going to go ahead and share my desktop. Jay or Russ, if anyone has any problems and they can't see it, please let me know.
Looks good so far.
And this is what's in your packet. I don't think we've changed it at all. So go ahead, Lauren.
Okay, very good. And I will do my best to zoom in a little bit so it's visually easier for those watching the screen, but I don't want to cut off any material. But nonetheless, I will do my best to accommodate visually what you all need. I think Eric started giving you all a little bit of an update as to what we have spent the last few weeks working with Russ and Eric and their team to update the model with, of which the actual 2012 numbers, revenues and expenditures have been updated. Just a little bit of a summary of what that means in terms of numbers. The total revenues are slightly less than we originally forecasted when we lasted this presentation to you all in April of this year. At that point, we were relying on the budgeted 2012 numbers, and now we have the actual numbers into the model. Revenues and expenditures are about slightly less than we had in the budget, and therefore that was the information that was presented to you in April. We ended the year with revenues exceeding expenditures, and in fact, there was a deposit to the general fund balance and no use of fund balance for 2012. We accounted for the city's refinancing that they did earlier this year to take out a piece of variable rate debt, in which a rate was budgeted higher than what we had borrowed at a 217, I believe was the rate we actually borrowed that when we did that refinancing earlier this year. The general fund is higher than we originally forecasted from the budget numbers in April when we presented to you, and that speaks to the deposit to the reserve fund at the end of the fiscal year. And also, population is slightly higher than we had originally forecasted because we assumed a 2% growth rate, and actually, the census numbers came out just a little bit slightly higher than what we were projecting the population to be. We have also accounted for the approved budget numbers for fiscal year 13, revenues and expenditures. Those are also slightly less than we originally had forecasted in April because those numbers for 13 grew off of the 2012 budget. We have also accounted for actual construction bids that have been received for the projects that we will speak to later in the presentation. Those numbers have been translated from administration to us, and we've now accounted for them in the model. Any questions?
I have a question where it says actual 2012 revenues and expenditures were used, but on that very last page, it looked to me as if in 2012, as I say, this is, and we can get, when we get to this, it looked like it used the $52,867,000 instead of the actual.
I'm so sorry. Can I ask your air?
It's on the very last page of your presentation.
Are you not hearing her, Lauren?
I can't hear her. She just came over from the speakerphone.
Is it, oh, is this page or...
No, it's the very last page that we have.
And this number, that's the attachment. She's going to have a lot of questions. You need to move up.
Yeah, why don't you come up here?
Sit right here.
We're going to move Ann closer, so she'll be closer to the speakerphone. She's saving her voice for the Titans game tonight.
We hope we have something to go with.
Lauren, what I was saying was that on the, I suppose this is on the addendum or Attachment A, on the very last page...
I think I have an answer for you on that.
Okay. It had the, 2012 had the old number on it.
I think I, and this is my fault, I attached for additional information this background detail, and I think I used an earlier version that had the 528 number. The actual number is in there with what Lauren ran. So I gave you background, and I did an earlier version.
52?
Yeah, with that 52.
So it's really, for expenditures, it's like $49 million, right?
Lauren's presentation hits on page 10.
And that's 50, 50.9, well, wait, no. Yeah, 50.9.
Maybe for the sake of continuity, let's let Lauren proceed, and we'll keep her questions and jot them down unless there's something that's earth-shaking and somebody's got to ask.
Just to address that, though, if you look at page eight, you'll see numbers that say estimated general fund budget under 12 that has 50.9 million. Page eight in the presentation.
Oh, I only have the number of pages down to four.
No, look at the presentation. In front of that, in front of that, yeah, page, yeah.
I'm looking at this, I don't have, down through page four.
Keep going.
But I don't have any others that are numbers that actually...
Keep going. After those, yeah, after that, yeah, that one, that one, yeah. I'm sorry, the ones in front, the two or three in front of that don't have numbers, but this is the...
Now, what are you saying about that page, Eric?
The two from the, that has those numbers, and you'll look at that general fund budget number, that 50.9 million, that's what Lauren used. That's the updated number she used. So the detail that I put in in the appendix had an earlier number, which I think may have been a projected number as opposed to the audit number or whatever, yeah.
You're saying the 50,090?
The 50 million, the 50.9 million.
Is really an actual, instead of a budget.
But it's actually revenue, and I think those numbers were supposed to be based on expenditures, if I'm not mistaken. But at any rate, whenever we get to that, I'll say something about that.
Okay.
But thank you.
Proceed, Lauren.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just back to the page in which two... Let's see, page three. Okay, additional updates that were made to the model, which associate a little bit, are related to the actual project that did the board approve. A lot of you have probably seen these projects, and you know them probably all by heart. The only thing I would think that would point out is the fire station seven and eight, and Russ and Eric, let me know if I have the title. We had originally only included the design work. We have also accounted for some construction fund costs, however, those are being offset and paid for out of a facility tax. And there's no debt being assumed for those projects, for that particular project.
That's correct. And actually, at this point, the board has only authorized the design services for those two fire stations. We expect to pay for it out of facilities tax, but it's not been approved or bid or anything yet. So that's kind of still out there, but you're right, it's outside of a debt-funded project.
Correct. And the other place that I would draw your attention to is, I guess, the fourth dash on the bottom, which is Carruthers Parkway. And I have a little note out to the side that says, "We've actually ran three different scenarios on this particular project." Everything else listed in terms of projects is being held constant throughout this update. The only thing that changes is whether or not we do a full portion of Carruthers Parkway or if we separate the two pieces, north and south. And I'll get to that here in just a moment.
Lauren, real quick, I'll just jump in. When you look at that list on page three, we have bid most all of these projects. The only exceptions would be Phase Two of Hillsborough Road, the Public Works actual facility project, you know, the update and modifications of the facility. That will be bid in January. We've bid the road, but not the building work. Eastern Flank, we just awarded. The Harlinsdale work that we anticipated is all in process at this point. And then the Century Court Beasley Connector still is yet to be done. The rest of them have all been bid, awarded, and are in the process of going if they're not going already.
Not the additional design, not that design.
That's just additional design work, but the construction projects, that's not a construction project, that's design only.
Right, okay.
Go ahead, Lauren, I just wanted to touch on that.
Can you hear us, Lauren?
If you can hear us.
Can you hear us? No, she can't hear us.
We can't read lips.
It did sound like she was breaking up at the end of her...
Lauren, I'll call you right back.
You should wait. She couldn't see us, but...
She says, she says sunny, maybe.
Ask her if it's sunny there.
End of year.
I don't want her rubbing it.
Yeah.
It was sunny here earlier.
That's okay. I can hear you now, put you back on speaker.
Okay, sorry about that.
No problem.
All right. Go ahead, talking about Carruthers Parkway, is that fair, Eric?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good. So as I alluded to, we did three different scenarios as it relates to this project. And I will tell you that I probably should have jotted these numbers down somewhere on this page, because when you see the next few slides, it is snapshots actually from the model, and that's why they don't have page numbers, and it's a lot of numbers in a lot of different places, of which only one line item actually changes, and it's related to the Carruthers Parkway project. The scenario one, we ran was the complete project was completed, and that is at 13.7 million. Scenario two, which is the north portion, is only the portion that we ran in scenario two, and that's at 5.8 million. And then number three is the south portion only, and that total is 7.9 million. And as I flip to the next few pages, and it's a lot of numbers, but I would probably just direct your eye to line seven, which is project number seven, and that's where you see Carruthers Parkway.
Everything else is the same, right?
That's correct.
Bless you.
So I wasn't going to spend a lot of time on these, but just show you that this is scenario one, in which row seven is Carruthers Parkway, the complete portion at 13.7. Scenario two, which is the north portion only, which is at 5.8 million, in row seven. And then rounding out the scenarios with number three, for the south portion only, at 7.9 million. So I'm going to give you a whole lot more numbers to look at. I'll try to point you in the direction of kind of getting to the point of what the impact is from these multiple scenarios. I'm also going to zoom in for you all in the room, if you're looking at it on the screen. I hope I'm not cutting anything off, but it's also helpful for me. What you see in this regard is that it goes in the same order in which we ran them. The blue portion is the complete portion, the green portion to the right is north, the red portion is the south portion only. I didn't plan to go through each one of these numbers, but kind of draw our eyes to specific facts and numbers that we have in these tables to understand the difference when looking at these three different ideas of how you do those approaches of projects. And looking at the cumulative new debt service, which is probably right smack in the middle of the table if I were to describe it, and kind of fast-forward all the way to 2016 in any one of these scenarios in which you've accumulated, taken on all the debt associated with all projects approved, based on updated construction fund numbers, the ones that, I've been of the ones that Eric spoke to, and just focusing on the amount of magnitude that this project has, whether it be the complete portion, the north portion, or the south portion only. So looking at the cumulative new debt service for the Carruthers Parkway, the complete project, it's approximately $2,262,172. Comparison to the Carruthers Parkway just the fourth portion, at cumulative new debt service all the way to 2016, that's that number of $1,928,114. So the difference between those two is approximately $334,000. If you were going to compare the complete project to the south portion only, the south portion's been a little bit more expensive, and the cumulative new debt service being approximately in 2016, $2,89,013, the difference between those two is approximately $173,000. So I also have a slide after this that just puts it in some of these metrics in a bar format, bar chart format. Eric, Russ, I don't have it helpful for me to go there, or if you want me to stay here because there's a lot of numbers, of which, it doesn't matter to me. I visually like the bar chart, so I'll stay wherever you want me to.
I think there are some questions, unless you want to go through that last piece and then come back to them, or however you want to do it.
Yeah, why don't, well, maybe we, let me show the bar charts, and let me show you kind of what maybe the end result here is, and then we'll come back. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
I'm going to zoom out a little bit here because we don't have as many numbers. And I'll try to make it through my screen, I don't lose too much of the data here. Hold on one second, bear with me. So speaking to the cumulative new debt service that I referenced on the slide before, that actually had the data, you can see that the cost comparison versus blue, which is the first bar chart of complete project versus north versus south, as well as all of the debt service as a percentage of the budget. And I think, while I think these are helpful, the comparison of the three are very, very, it's hard to, visually you can see it, but it's not a huge impact. I think that I wanted to give you all an update, as to if you think back to why we go through this process in the first place, it really relates to the metrics that you all established through debt management policy. And can you go this route with a complete project, and how does it impact your debt ratios versus just doing a portion north or south? So that's the next slide. So let me end there, and then I'll certainly open it up for questions and go back to any of the information that you would like me to. So comparing the three scenarios versus full project or the completed project for the north or south portion alone, you end up in terms of the metrics that you have put in place for yourself to monitor throughout the valuation of capital projects and any debt associated with them, you end up in the same place. In fact, visually on a bar chart, we were struggling to even see the differences between scenarios one, two, and three, and so we went back to this table in which we presented to you all in the past, and it seems to be a good kind of summary recap of the five. Where do you end? If any of these depressure, obviously, the debt service as a percent of operating expenditure has been a ratio in which we've not been in compliance with in the past, and obviously, as expenditures have been cut, we just become even more out of compliance. So I will end, this is based off of the 13 budget numbers, the $55 million budget, and I think Eric was speaking to that earlier. But I will kind of stop here and let you all ask questions. I will ask for your patience in that if you're far from the phone, I'm not going to be able to hear you, so we may have to have someone translate it to me closer to the phone.
And one thing to emphasize, just as you look at these numbers, this is a debt capacity, so it takes the projects that we're using debt to pay for. So there are things like the fire station that we talked about, or some of these other projects that are in the mix that we are paying for as we go or with cash, we're not using debt to fund them. So this really relates to us assuming that we're assigning debt service to these projects. We've also been conservative in that we have not assigned any road impact fees to this because we're looking at that fund and saying, you know, right now, it needs to get above the line, and so we're not assigning cost to it. But you could see in the future the potential for dollars to flow from that for these types of projects. But we have not applied anything from that. We've not made any assumption about the opportunity to sell property that we own, either on the hill or where Streets is today, once we consolidate to the site off of Columbia. So we've not made any of the... So we've not made any of those assumptions that we know at some point will help us with some of this picture overall, we've been pretty conservative in that regard, and I just wanted to stress that this really hits the debt portion of this, 'cause that's what drives your policy. And that we think we've done a good job of using other sources where we can, and that's what we've done, so you may feel like, well, is that project in there? All the projects you approved are in there, some are not all supported by debt, so they didn't factor in this measurement at the end. Questions?
I know in...
Can you hear Alderman Skinner?
One of our documents, there was a statement about planning was evaluating facilities or road impact fees, or how close are we to having numbers on projects that we know are being requested?
Well, we've projected some numbers on that, we've just been conservative, because we don't know the timing of those, and so we haven't factored those in. We have some rough numbers related to certain projects, it depends on timing, and how quickly they happen, and when that comes in, so that's why we've been conservative, and not really factored those in, Russ has done a little more closer analysis on that, so.
Well, I've looked at the product that planning came up with, for example, on Carruthers South, and they were looking at a minimum of six to seven million in road impact fees coming from those projects that are somewhat in the pipeline now, excluding the commercial venture, Berry Farm, and things like that. But as Eric said, we don't know about the timing. So, the rule, I think, right now is to more or less exclude those until we're a little closer and we have a handle on those.
So were those calculations at buildout, or at a certain time period?
Well, they were, that was the total, assuming a buildout over 10 years. It would be incremental throughout that time period.
And that does not factor those projects that are further north on Carruthers, that we've talked about as we've looked at that, Carruthers-McEwen, this is really the development south of 96 East.
Carruthers Parkway, that would be along Carruthers Parkway.
More than 96, we know the numbers will be very large.
Significantly higher.
But it's very hard to calculate them at this time, until you see the plans.
And we've also got significantly higher infrastructure needs, potentially, in that 10 to 15-year time horizon in that area, so when Russ gives that number, that's the area more in this region that we're talking about.
What other project, sorry?
I had Alderman blank, I'm sorry.
Just remind me the golden number that we shouldn't exceed again, on percentage-wise.
Well, it varies on each one of the...
Eight percent.
Eight, okay.
Eight percent on the one.
But on the one that, where we have the red line on, the debt service as a percentage of operating expenditures, that's the one that's really looked unfavorable ever since 2009, when we started whacking budget, and it was a considerable diminishment of the budget, that threw that number out of line, but we basically said in our targeting, eight percent, ideally, we would not want to go above.
One of the things we look at, too, is the medians from the other AAA cities, which are not, have not been updated yet, right? Lauren, can you shed any light on what we might know, or when we might know it, on that element of this?
You know, I wish I could say that I knew that it was going to produce that information, even by the end of the calendar year, they have very much slipped their timeframes, in which we usually see that come out about September, and I don't remember when it was when we got it for 2011, but it was very delayed, so I'm not sure when we'll see it. As soon as we get it, we certainly pass it on to you all, and look to reevaluate things as needed. There wasn't a material change, to be honest, between 10 and 11, it will be interesting to see how 12 plays out, I certainly can't speak to, you know, what, I won't make any assumptions, but hopefully we'll get it, my guess is it'll be some point in February or March.
Can I make a comment about those assumptions, and that is, that the one that shows red all the time is that percentage? However, I have been told that at least two of those other guidelines are looked upon by the rating agencies as our ability to tax more, which is, to me, not the same thing. So, even though we are, we do not show anything, any yellow or red lights, that means that, as I say, the rating agencies don't mark us down for that, because, in their opinions, we could tax a lot more than we are currently taxing.
When we developed the policy, about three years ago, we wanted to look at what the rating agencies look at, in terms of assessing the fiscal health, and the capacity, and all those things of an entity, and so that's really where these benchmarks came from, and it looks at all sides of the equation, there's no question about that. And so we tried to reflect the kind of things they look at, and the kind of things that you factor in when you make these decisions. One of the challenges we face, and particularly why we looked at some of the communities we looked at, is AAA cities that were facing growth pressures, as opposed to a AAA city that might be built out and doesn't have quite the demand that we do, and the one where we're hitting red is where you're gonna expect to potentially see that, because you've got growth in the pipeline, and you're trying to meet it, or stay up with it as best you can, and so you're probably gonna push that area a little more compared to operating expenses than some other AAA cities might, that have less growth pressure. So, that's why we tried to further refine that to that group, but that is where we were, I think, when we ran this last spring, I think that net debt per capita was a yellow, is that correct? I didn't...
I've got that.
Let me pull that up for the...
Percentage of market.
Percentage of market, okay, I knew one of the others was a yellow, and so that is tweaked a little bit based on, I think, some population growth, some of the other numbers that we talked about, that have bolstered us over the year, but...
Can I say that the building the entire road at that time, based on those numbers, was red, and there were two yellows, for, one of them was for the north segment, and the other one was for the south segment.
Other questions?
Oh, we just wanted to have other questions, period, if we are, I wanna get back in the line.
I just want my comment about, Eric, you just mentioned the potential for growth, the percentage of growth, was not factored in, or when we did this a couple of years ago, or it was a...
It was, we just have updated numbers, and there's a per capita measure in here, and we just used updated numbers, we've also retired a little more debt than we had projected because of the timing lag, and how we've done some of this, and we're always conservative, kind of pushing the kind of the interest rates, and where we are, when we're gonna really issue debt, we always kind of push it maybe earlier than we might really do it, just to be conservative, so some of those, once you factor in the reality, change those ratios a little bit. So, population affects it, where we are in terms of fund balance, all those things, the assumptions we made about where our budget would be, once we get to real numbers, it comes in a little better than what we had projected.
So perhaps goes from a yellow to a green?
Yeah, that was one of the things that we saw.
Correct.
On page three, when we went over these projects, which ones are not gonna accumulate, are not gonna be accumulating debt, besides, we've got the design for the fire station, and the buildout.
When you go down that list, that eastern flank, eastern flank wouldn't, fire station wouldn't, park at Harlinsdale would not, the McEwen Drive, Wilson Pike to city limits, design would, potentially although it's only designed cost at this point, but the Wilson, the Wilson and McEwen improvements that we've awarded, that's really a mix of the contribution from the schools, and then the portion that the city gets from facilities tax, that comes through the county, so that's really not relying on debt either.
You're talking, that's McEwen-Wilson intersection.
Yes, that's number five.
Okay, got it.
And I think the rest of them, we've assumed debt, although you could potentially see us do a smaller project like the Century Court Connector, I don't know if we'll fold that into a bond issue or not, that might be a judgment call we make. I think the balance of the other projects, that two to three-plus million you'll see, end up in a bond issue eventually. What we typically do is get those projects awarded, get them started, and then sell the debt a little later on, like we might sell that, the next time we sell debt might be next fall, maybe, after we've gotten further along in the projects we're in, and we have a better handle on everything.
Possibly Century Court, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's a relatively small project, that's the one that could probably go either way, depending on what we wanna do with it, where we are. And then we've also assigned, when you look at Hillsborough, this is really Hillsborough and the Public Works facility, we have assigned a portion of some costs to the water and sewer elements, you know, the beautification or streetscape elements are eligible to be paid for, in terms of debt service from hotel-motel, so we've spread that out, so what you see in the model is really just what we assume is gonna hit the general obligation debt portion.
Where start having an extension in this mix?
That really was from the prior funding plan, so it was already funded, and it's been factored in, and we've already borrowed that money, so...
Make sure you weren't sliding anything in.
Yeah, no, that one was before this plan, actually.
I just wanna make sure, Mr. Mayor, from where, this information we're getting on the updates, what is our goal here? What are we trying to do? We're trying to, what are you wanting, what are we trying to do? Are we trying to vote and change the current policy, or are we looking to move things differently? What is the aim here?
Well, all we're doing at this point is updating the financial model for you, there's discussion about how you wanna proceed with Carruthers South, and if you wanna phase it, if so, which phase you wanna do when, or if you wanna try to do the entire stretch of road, and in fact, when we were going through the funding plan, that was one of the things the board challenged us on, is look at the whole, tell us what that looks like, too. We went ahead and did the design work, 'cause that needed to be done anyway, so we completed that design, that was finished in November, we've got updated cost estimates that are reflected in here, so we're basically laying that into the model, updating everything we can in the model, and showing you what that looks like if you choose a south phase, a north phase, or the entire road. So that's really what we put on the table for you, and that just gives you more information to give us directions on how you wanna proceed with Carruthers South, and, you know, if you want to, and if so, how you want to, what you wanna build.
Well, for me, looking at all the potential growth that we just talked about, that's sort of slated for out in that area, it looks majorly significant, and therefore, looking at a completed road would be where I would like to have my discussion.
Can we get some more questions before we start talking about that? As I say...
Yeah, I think you're next, I don't think I had anybody else to raise their hand.
Okay, and I'm not sure I understand, it looks as if what we're having to fund anew would be Hillsborough Road, and the consolidated Public Works facility, I need to, and this may be a question that I just asked to our staff, what is our current position on the Public Works facility funding, and what are we proposing now to do? Because, you know, at the time, we did not borrow any money, and I think at one point, it was also included just in our, that year's budget, you know, it showed up there, I'll put it that way, so if I could get some information about how we are intending to fund the public work facility, the purchase and the building out, or the working on the building.
The assumption all along has been that we would fund that through a general obligation debt issuance.
Which we have not done yet.
Right, but what we've done, and when you made the purchase, you approved a resolution that authorized that to potentially be debt-funded, so you've used your, essentially your cash balance, to go ahead and front that money, purchase the property, get us started on the design work, we've awarded the access road contract, expect that we'll bid the facility work in, probably in January, so those are all portions that, to this point, we've all assumed would eventually land in a bond issue, be funded by a bond issue. Now, we have the luxury of having the fund balance, we have, helps us front some money, get projects moving, and then come back and get debt to replace that money, essentially. And so that's what we've assumed all along, you could take another look at that, and use some cash for that, and not use all the debt, not use all of it for debt-funded projects, but that's really up to you, and you still have that right if you'd like. Our assumption, though, all along has been that it would land in debt-funded capital.
That's mine.
Yeah. One little nuance I just wanna touch on, it says 5.5 million for the total, and 5 million to the general obligation, we've assumed a half-million-dollar contribution from water and sewer to the project, that's probably fairly conservative as well, but we felt that was fair, so I just wanted to highlight, if you see those two numbers, it's a, when you look at that line, it shows 5.5 million on any one of the project breakdown sheets, scenarios one, two, or three.
If you're looking on the first unnumbered page there, that's where that is.
The attachments have that as well, it just shows a breakdown, that there's 5.5 in total, but 5 million being assigned to general obligation debt at this point.
Okay, so continuing with that, then, and I'm looking just at the scenario one, you know, because that's the, we're talking about it, and that's the first one, then it appears that the additional money required for south Carruthers would be the 13...
13.76.
13, 13.6. Or, yeah, 7.6, what it, okay, so whenever we go over here and talk about additional debt service, and in this case, I guess I'm on page eight, you know, that's now numbered again, I see the additional debt service total would be 693,750, that's in 2016 there. So, we're saying, then, that that would be, if we borrowed another, the 13 point, what did we just say, 13.6 or 13.7? But whenever you look, just continuing across the page there, at 2016, if we only went with borrowing the, I wanna say 5 million, I don't have that number in front of me, then that just goes down 100, a little more than, I mean, 100, 100,000?
173.
167,000? That's right, so...
Can I make a...
Yes.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Tell us about that, because that seems a lot, well, we just lost it, it looks like.
Are you still on the phone?
Stay there.
Yes.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
I think I understood the question, let me make something very clear, maybe I didn't on the front end, that all the other projects are also included in these numbers, the only moving part is whether or not you do the complete portion of south Carruthers, or Carruthers Parkway, excuse me, or the north portion versus the south portion. So, the impact, it becomes smaller, harder to see, if you will, because it assumes that you're borrowing for the other projects that are not being funded out of, you know, hotel-motel tax, or whatever the net funding needs are. The only moving portion in this analysis is the, how much you are, or how much do you approve to do for Carruthers Parkway, and in turn, that correlates to how much you borrow. Does that make, and I'm not sure if I understood the question.
Yes, I can understand that, but why is it just a very small amount of difference between borrowing the 13-plus million for the entire Carruthers, and 500,000 for the $5 million...
North Carruthers, I'm on it.
North Carruthers Park.
Well, if I could take that one, the impact is spread over the years 14, 15, and 16, it's not all in one year.
Right.
Because the money will be expended, so there's a, there would be a little bit added
in each year, whether you do the north, south, or the full project.
But it doesn't even look like it, though, Russell, because it's like, even if you compare, you compare 14, 15, and 16 with the additional debt service in each scenario, there's not much difference.
Well, it's in 15 and 16.
It's really just in those last two years.
It's still not much difference, though.
Between, and I don't...
I think it assumes a 20-year...
A 20-year amortization, but the difference between... A 20-year amortization, but the difference between, what was it, 7 million and 13 million?
Yeah.
Is 6 million, and if you figure it at 6 and 1/2 or 7 dollars per hundred, what the debt service would be, there's not a lot of incremental difference in that.
Well, so, in looking at this, though, we've hit all our reds, which is not good, but it looks like we'd be better served to go ahead and do the whole thing, because we're only saving $334,000, or expending more, $334,000 more over the long haul.
That's right. You're spending that every year for the next 17, 18 years after this.
Well, and if we can...
So, that's the thing I want to be clear on, but it's not a huge difference, but it is a...
No, but if you consider we had an extra million this year that we were able, I mean, not that that's going to happen every year, but knowing development is right behind us, or it's right next to us, wanting us to move.
Yes.
I mean, and that's not even funneled into this formula. I mean, I'm saying, let's go.
I agree.
Well, can, I mean, I do agree that we are looking much better than I thought we would, what, a year ago? I certainly think that's true. But I still don't see how borrowing 13 million as opposed to, what, less than 6 million, is going to go from 500,000 to only 600-something thousand. I mean, it looks like you're borrowing more than twice as much, so why is not the debt service on twice as much, twice as much?
Well, it's accumulative, so it's, while that element is larger, it's still part of a larger whole. So, as a percentage, it's not as, it's not as big, it's not, that's the one thing that changes, but you've also got, in your base, all the other borrowing.
Is it because we can see it in 2020?
But, but isn't it...
You've got other five projects we're borrowing for. So, that's a part of it. Ultimately, it's a little, it's not as big as you might think, because there's other projects in there.
But it looks like, it looks like the committed projects were 14 million, and then we're adding another seven, another 13 million to it. At least, those are the numbers that I got, the numbers that I saw here on, on that, the first unnumbered page. The first unnumbered page shows the five-year total of committed projects, 14,250,000. And then down here, this is another 13,762,000. So, why is that, why is that not...
Are we triple checking the math?
Why is the debt service on that not twice as much?
We have been carrying some assumption about something uncorral throughout the capital program. Even like last spring, we were carrying, I think, something around 6 million or something. We were assuming a phase. So, that might be part of that. But we look at the total of all the projects and run debt service assumptions on those.
You have to consider for the mathematician, what the math doesn't add up to the naked eye, and I agree.
That's right, that's right.
It's kind of like, hmm.
Well, let me offer you this, we can run the numbers just on those projects and exclude all the others.
Yeah.
Lauren, we could do that pretty quickly, couldn't we, not?
I think if it wanted to triple check...
We could run something without a Carruthers at all.
Well, I, I mean, but okay, the Carruthers, okay, that's right, that's right. So, but it looks...
How much debt does $334,000 service today?
Oh, somewhere in the 6 million dollars.
6 million, which is the swing between a phase and a non-phase.
It's about $6 per hundred principal interest.
But, we're just saying it adds 167,000.
No, it adds, compared to, compared to scenario one versus scenario, what's the least expensive, two?
Two.
Yep.
That difference is $330,000.
And where is that?
That, if you look at slide eight, and you look at that cumulative new debt service number, and you've got that, I'm looking at 16 as a good benchmark, because that's when everything's loaded in. And you see 2.26 million in 2016 for all of Carruthers.
Mm-hmm.
You see 1.9 million for the northern portion only. That's all, again, cumulative new debt service. And then when you look at the south, which is the more expensive of the phasing approaches, it's 2.08, just under 2.1 million. So, if you compare the difference between those two, you're just about $330,000 between scenario one and scenario two, which would equate to that about $6 million swing, 6 to 7 million dollar swing between those phasings. A phasing in a full building...
It just occurred to me one other thing. We're going from 2012, which, you know, ended, what, six months ago. We probably should have at least gone from this fiscal year to, if we're talking five years from now, we should have gone beyond that, because I see, I see in one respect that we're just looking at one extra year of paying that debt service, one year of paying that debt service, whenever we're talking about having it go on for years and years. But as I say, I still maybe would like to see that, and that's what, the reason that I sent Russ some questions to you before, you know, earlier today, because I just couldn't get this to, to seem to me that it added up.
I'm sorry if you sent those, I did not see them.
Well, I sent it this morning, but I can understand. But to be honest with you, we got these, what, last Wednesday? And this time of year, I didn't, as much as I, as interested in it as I am, I did not have time to even, I mean, I went through all of this one time. I could not, and what I said in there, I can't make sense of very much of it, to tell you the truth. But I did want to see, and I did have, I had pointed out those particular numbers there, and still I'm interested in seeing. I guess you're saying here, though, that you've just got one year of it.
Well, a couple of things. We didn't add any additional years, because we wanted it to be apples-to-apples to what you were looking at in April, to the extent possible, so you could see the impact of the new numbers, without adding additional years and complexity to it. The other thing is, you said in 2016, you know, you don't really see what's happening in the out years, but by 2016, all of the debt, all of the debt will be borrowed for the project. We've assumed that it will be borrowed no later than, really, July of '15, so it's in the FY '16 budget. So, that's, you are seeing the full impact, after all the money that had been borrowed.
And this is assuming that we are not going to add any other project, other than these that we see right here?
That's true.
In the next, what, four years, we're not going to add another project?
That would...
I mean, that's what you're assuming here, right?
That's what we do with the model, is we apply a group of projects over a time period to that, to that capacity model, and then, you know, we update it about every year as we look at things, so...
Well, I did notice that you did not have the Harlinsdale Barn down in here. I can understand that it is being paid for by Hotel Motel, but several other projects you do have in here, even though they're not going to be paid by debt service. And very honestly, whenever it says, if you look across here on the Harlinsdale Farm improvements, it does not expect any other money. It does have the 131,300 there, but it does not have the 725,000 that we have already proved this year. And I would say that the expectation, at least from some areas, is that there would be more money needed for that. And as I say, I didn't, I never saw the 725,000 anywhere in here.
You didn't, because you paid that with cash.
But, but on some others...
You approved that outside of the capital projects and authorized those projects, and those were paid for with, basically with cash we had on hand, and we amended the budget within the fund to accommodate those projects.
But, but on some other things, because that's going to be paid by Hotel Motel, it's really not going to be paid for by...
Correct.
...fund balance.
It's not going to weigh into the general obligation, anyway.
That's right, that's right.
Yes.
However, some other things, though, that were also funded that way, were included in here.
That's because you approved them when you went through the capital project process?
So, and...
So, we wanted to reflect what you've approved, and then there was a specific decisions made related to repairs of the barn and the house, some of which was driven by FEMA money that was coming into the project, and some other things that we needed to take care of. So, that really got sort of dealt with as, almost like an operating capital item, as opposed to a capital project. It admittedly kind of fell outside of this process because of the need and the unique funding opportunity, the need that we needed to spend the federal money within a timeframe.
I do want to say, at the time that we talked about that, I did make the comment that should have gone through capital improvements, because it was, it was even more than what we had planned to spend on our small projects. Not that that's here nor there here.
Right.
But, but again, just to say that, you know, if we commit to this, then it means that we are not expecting other things, because we're, we're looking at our, you know, the numbers that we're looking at here. As I say, we're in a much better place than I expected us to be a year ago. However, I also have to say that whenever we wound up only spending $50 million, or even less than $50 million in 2012, now, whenever you look at this, on the, you know, on the, on the page again, I guess that's unnumbered, it indicates that in fiscal year that we're in right now, we're expecting to increase our budget by 10%, by $5 million from what we, from what we had this past, the past year that's just ended. I mean, is that realistic? I think whenever we proposed the budget, we were planning to increase by 3.1?
Well, if I may, part of the reason the revenues are low is because we expected a big grant on the, for the traffic operations center, and they just didn't get far enough along to actually begin the work and get the bid awarded. So, there was about 1.7 million in grant that did not happen. That was taken out of '12, and it's been put back in '13. So, it makes it, you subtract it from one, add it to the other, you've got a pretty big swing there. So, that's, that's a big chunk of the reason right there. The revenues were actually a little bit less, but as we pointed out in the audit, or the auditors, when they made their presentation to you, you know, the key elements of our revenues were up. Sales tax was up, more than we expected in the budget, and more than Lauren had plugged into the model. Property taxes also went, the base went up, even though we were disappointed in some of the challenges that we had, and the amount that we got, it still was above what we, the conservative numbers that we plugged into the model for slow growth going forward. So, I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time worrying about that 55 number. You know, that's what we've just been through the budget with and approved, and it seemed to be a pretty realistic number when we did that.
Well, then I guess my other comment is that we do see a great deal of growth planned for this corridor, but please keep in mind, I don't know, at least for two years, maybe longer than that, our road impact fees have been in the red. They have not paid the principal and interest on the amount of money that we already have borrowed. And so, even though this will definitely improve, we're certainly hoping in the next few years, it still has to come back pretty far to get to the place where it is paying for what we've already borrowed. In fact, you remember, we, we put some money from the other debt service funds in to pay it off, so that it wouldn't be so, wouldn't show up so much in the red. And I looked, it looked like the first four months of this year, even though it was better than last year, it still does not meet what we have budgeted for the current fiscal year. So, you know, there are a lot to numbers, and as I say, I'm very pleased that, that we, you know, have the, the million dollars that we had not expected to have. We, in fact, it's kind of a big shift, because we had expected, I believe, to draw a million dollars. So, that part really looks very good. But I still think that something like this should not be done, kind of only looking on the rosy side, and not being realistic about that. As I say, I feel much better than I, than I did a year ago, or even six months ago, whenever we were finishing this. But, but still, we also need to keep in mind that if we, if we make this large commitment, which is really twice as much as we had planned, you know, that we had committed to with the 14 million dollars, an extra 13 million is twice, as I say, virtually twice that much. And I think that it is going to affect, number one, what we can do in our general fund, and secondly, that it certainly, if we are prudent, would prevent us from doing some other things that may come up in the next, what, four years.
Do you give Alden Martin?
I'm not going to argue about the details of this, but I think with the development that is predicted, South, on South Carruthers... We need to be proactive instead of reactive, and it's going to take years to get it done. I think we ought to start now, I think we ought to do the whole thing, and if we don't have enough money, I think we ought to raise taxes. I think we have, we have prided ourselves on either lowering or keeping taxes at what they were. I do not think that's smart. If we had raised taxes a little bit along the way, we might not, neither so badly right now. But I'm not opposed to that, and I think that this, if that's where the development is going, we need to prepare for it. Things are not going to get any less extensive. They're going to be more every year, and I don't think we ought to put it off.
Alden Skinner?
I agree with Alden Martin that, you know, that was some years ago, that it was kind of embarrassing, because our infrastructure lagged so much behind our project. We have an opportunity now to go ahead and provide in front of some of these projects and prepare for them. You know, we talked some years ago, in 2008, how much sales tax revenue we had lost, but we also had lost generated building fees and facilities and all those things, because the building had gone to nothing. Now, we're hearing from the developers, they are trying to purchase land, they are trying to make plans. So, this is not a what-if, this is, this will happen, it's just whether or not we get prepared for it. And that's what's important now, is get in front of these developments and do the infrastructure and do the planning, because I think the money and revenue will help offset many of the things that we're worried about now. And it won't come overnight, but it will come over years, and that's, that's probably as sure a thing as we can bet on now.
Let's see, Alden Berger, and then Alden Branchman.
I totally agree with you, Mike. You know, you talked about infrastructure lagging behind development, we don't want to do that again, because we've already done that. Previous boards and planning commissions have allowed, and our boards in the past have allowed, the biggest example of that is McEwen, where we are right now, and what a mess we, we will have if we do not address the design and the construction of McEwen Phase Four. It's critical, because we, we finished Phase Three at the six, at the four lanes, and that's accommodating now, and it's doing well. We went ahead, we had foresight to go ahead and just bite the bullet and do Carruthers. That is just jam-packed over there at rush hour right now, and we're going to have even more of it. Of course, we're doing the studies to say what we need to do in the future over there in that corridor. Because that corridor is so critical to our businesses and our corporations that come in here, I'm all for Carruthers. I think that this is a smart thing to do, to get out ahead, go hand-in-hand with development that's already happening there, going to happen, getting, I mean, the birth pangs are there, I mean, we've got to get it going. But we cannot sacrifice McEwen, because when you talk about infrastructure, you know, getting it out ahead of development, I have people over there that say, y'all looking at these other areas in town, and that is so critical, and they agree. It is critical to get out ahead of development or with, in tandem with development. At the same time, we cannot ignore it, we cannot let it slide, we cannot let that go by the wayside, because that's part of this whole model that we're looking at, that Lauren's talking to us about. We've got to find a way to get McEwen Phase Four finished. We've got it, we've got to get that designed, and we are doing those two projects, starting next month, the connector and the intersection down there at Wilson, which is great, but we've got a whole section in between there. And we have, you know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but you all know, we've got the school out there, we've got all the development, we have McKay's Mill, we have Meet of Avalon, we have Avalon, we have Breezeway, we have Ashton Park, we have all those areas out there. And it's busting at the seams, and we've got... busting at the seams, and we've got to make sure that we do this in tandem with this as well. So, wherever we can find the money, we have to make sure that we pace ourselves and get that on, on, on here now. So, I just want to remind everybody where we're going with this, and, uh, I totally support Carruthers, but we have to totally support McEwen Four.
My comment, in this scenario, the five hundred thousand that we kept in uncommitted, is that still a part of this scenario?
No, no, it's not.
Okay, so, because the statement came up, there may be new things coming up, and we live in a dynamic world here, and there will be, in the next four years, I can't sit here and say that there will not be something that I'm very attracted to, that may not come up, and will benefit this city, so, um, maybe we just need to look at.
And, and we will look at capital projects again, first part of next year.
Okay.
We're, we're going to keep looking at them, just so that we're, keep them in mind and know what's important.
Yes.
Uh, we will always look at the financial capacity, along with our, our want list, our priority list, and see how far we can go, and what capacity, if any, is there, and, um, you know, so that, that will happen, just, just so you noted, because we can't forget about the projects that are in, you know, still under consideration, and, and what those benefits are as well, uh, but we'll always look at capacity, and we've been in this place every time we've done a funding plan, where we kind of look at how far we can go, uh, and then update it, you know, each time we go through it, and see where, what we can get done.
Alden Peters.
Please keep in mind, we have just talked about in the last few months, the part of North Carruthers that is north of McEwen, which, you know, I have, it seemed, whenever that was brought up, that that may be something that, uh, is, is, uh, is a work that needs to be done fairly quickly, too, and I, you know, of course, we haven't looked at any numbers or anything like that, but still, that, that is a, I would think, a fairly large project that, uh, that will be coming right away.
It's very good.
Have we done this? Lauren, show with us.
Thanks, Lauren, unless you have a closing comment, other than Merry Christmas and bah humbug.
You stole it. That's how they do it all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
Thanks to Jay for.
Yeah, thank you, making it work, that's very nice, very convenient.
So, I have a question, what is the next step on the decision for South Carruthers?
Well, we could, we can put some, we can put a specific resolution on for January eighth, for you to authorize the whole road, the south phase and north phase, you know, we can do a fill-in-the-blank if you'd like, um.
Yeah, I want to, I want to talk about that now.
That's your next official voting meeting.
I, I want to get, Mr. Mayor, I want to get a consensus here of what everyone's thinking. Are we, are, are.
You know my opinion.
I know you're, you think, do the whole thing, get it done, do the two lanes, grade it out for four, build the two. That's what I.
Good.
Are you?
Yep.
Consensus, Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
Been very fine.
I'm undecided.
Got a lot of information here. Anne, how about you?
Do we know when the, uh, facility?
What are you doing? I'm deciding.
Fleet facility will be bid.
Did you say what facility?
The, the Public Works.
Public Works.
That'll be bid in January at some.
We just don't know the.
We don't know exact date, that's a, that's a, um, gosh, a couple million dollars, it's not a huge project in the grand scheme of things, compared, no, but compared to the thirteen million dollar project you're talking about, it's, it's not going to probably move the needle, uh, even if that comes in a little higher than we're projecting, uh, which I, I don't know that it will, but it just, we've got that one to do. Um, I don't know that you'd need to wait to bid that one, um, I don't think you can wait to bid, uh, the second phase of Hillsborough, which probably won't happen until the summer, uh, if, if you're interested in moving Carruthers forward, but that, you know, that's up to you in terms of timing. How close are we to being able to bid Carruthers? What's, what's the lead time in your guys' mind to do that?
What's the lead time on Hillsborough? Lead. When's the design for McEwen going to get done?
Three to four months before we'd have a, a, a bid back for award on Carruthers?
Basically, once we have a decision, north or south, we can start our bidding process, finalize the documents, and start the process. But during the advertising.
So, to answer your question on Hillsborough, we're, we're depending on authorization from T-DOT, because of the T-DOT funding involved, we're estimating June, July, I think, is the last.
Yeah, actually, we're going to wait till Phase One started coming to its completion, and then we would look at rolling out bidding of Phase Two right after Phase One, getting ready to go out, which is fifteen months construction.
Please keep in mind that that has, the last time I looked, sixteen million, sixteen thousand vehicles per day, whereas Carruthers has three thousand. Yes.
All right. Oh, you have one last question for us?
One last thing, it may have three ma- it may have three, whatever you say.
Three thousand.
Three thousand a day, but it's going to have as many as everything else does, with all that development down there, and I'll bet you money, Beck.
How much?
It takes thirteen thousand dollars, this year it'll be twenty-six thousand, I mean, twenty-six million next year. If it's thirteen million today, in a year, it'll be twenty-six.
How much did you bet?
I'll take that on a, I'll take that on a contingency.
Want to cut down on traffic, if we have housing down there, and we have, you know, the Seventh Ridge as well. We can have people working on, in the entire corridor of Carruthers, and cutting down on traffic around town for people coming in and out of here from other places that can actually move here.
And I would like to think.
So, that would be a help. You want to talk about movement of traffic? Let's get them here.
I would.
So, I say every time I walk in here.
I would like to think we can do more than one thing at one time, so we could do a couple things.
We're multitaskers here.
All right. Multitaskers, Merry Christmas.
Now, leading over.
Are we done?
Oh, we're just ready to discuss more.
We're going to bring to you a resolution on January eighth.
Now, let's not drag this out.
To authorize what you want us to do.
We, we, you pretty well heard it, Eric, you pretty well heard it, four lanes.
I have, I think I know where you're going, yeah.
We'll write it up, that's the whole.
Now, I want to know when the design money is coming for Phase Four, when do we put, when do we get?
It's in there.